If everybody could find a seat, if there's any left. Be good. Good evening. It's good to see all these people here. Thanks for coming. Even though we're in Borough Council chambers, this is the March meeting of voting session of the Planning Commission. Most of us, except Diane here, are not used to being up here, so you bear with us to start. I'd like to call it order, the March 2023 Planning Commission meeting voting session. Before I get to the first item, which is citizen comments of items not on the agenda, I'd like to say that this is the Planning Commission, like I said before, and what our function is. So we're Advisory Board or Advisory Commission to Borough Council, and we advise Borough Council on matters involving zoning and planning. So what that means is we would review any given projects that's brought before us, and then we advise Borough Council on how to proceed in terms of approving or denying, or whatever it may be for a given project. I know that there's a lot of people here. I know from the last work session last week, there were quite a few people that showed up, and they weren't quite, there was a lot of questions and not necessarily misunderstanding, but just kind of trying to understand what the system was. So hopefully, we'll explain some of that as we go along.
Thanks, Jason. And before we get into the meat of the agenda here, I just want to go through a couple of housekeeping items, since we do have a large crowd, and I'm sure everybody is here for one item in particular. When we do get to that agenda item, we will allow the developer and their consultants to make a presentation. We will ask that anybody in the audience, if you have questions, you wait until the presentation is done. You will then, you can raise your hand, and we'll call, we'll try to make an orderly fashion on how we can get people up to the mic. But if you want to speak, if you have questions, we'll ask that you come up to the podium here in the center. You have to state your name and address for the record, and then we can address any comments, concerns, and so will the developer and their team. But that will be the process for this evening. So I'll turn it back over to Jason to move on with the agenda.
Oh, everyone, that's Kevin Gore, our zoning officer. One other thing I wanted to say was on the website, there was a question regarding documents and drawings for projects. So if it's possible to go to the Borough website, just the main site? Yeah, I'll just, I'll do this real quick. On the Borough website, if you go under the, which is the government, if you go to Government, and then Boards and Commissions, we have the Planning Commission. And this would be for any board or commission for that matter. And that's where you can find our meeting minutes and our agendas. And then over to the right on that, it's under Contact Us, it says Documents. That is the Document Center, which would contain all of the drawings for any given project. So if you go down to the given date. Yeah, right there. And then, you know, for example, one of the projects that's on the agenda tonight. And then all of the information. So you can, it's pretty much everything that we receive. So you can go through it and read through it, and it's really great reading. So, so, so I think that's just to answer another question about, you know, where are the drawings? And, you know, there's, there is a good amount of transparency. It's all here. Sometimes it's a little bit hard to find, that's all. So if we can go onto the first item, which is citizen comments of items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have to approve the previous January minutes and the February meeting minutes. So does anyone have any, just kind of take them both at once? Does anyone have any questions or comments for those?
Yeah, in the January minutes, which I provided, I said that the adjournment for the January meeting was approved seven to zero, but there were only five people there that night, so need to fix that.
Just had one small typo on the January one. Under the Zoning Ordinance Amendment paragraph, the second line talks about the zoning ordinance, and it says the zooming ordinance, which sounds better, but we probably should change it for that. But it's really good job putting all that together.
Anyone else? Let's just go with the January minutes first. Does anyone have a motion to approve? Actually, I'll make a motion to approve January minutes. Second?
Second.
A second, and then all in favor? All approved. February minutes, also make a motion to approve the minutes with any typos or whatever corrected. Does anyone have a second? Okay, Matt seconds. Anyone all approve? Aye. There we go. Okay, so now on to new business. What I'd like to do before we start new business, that would be the 410 South High Street Land Development Application. What we're going to do is we're going to allow the applicant to give their presentation, whatever you'd like to say and however you'd like to present it. And then we have our consultants here, Borough consultants here, to answer questions. The Planning Commissioner, or anyone else for that matter. If you have anything that you'd like to say after, as a summary or anything, just feel free. And then, then we will open it up to the Planning Commission, of which there are normally seven members in the Planning Commission. We are a short one. So anyone here who's a Borough resident, and happily, if you want to get engaged and make a big change in the world, you can apply to be in the Planning Commission. From what Kevin said, there will be something on the website shortly on how to apply and do that. But we will then comment questions for the applicant, and then we'll open it up to you folks. And then, like Kevin said, three minutes. And the one thing I'd also ask is not to necessarily ask the applicants anything directly. I don't think this needs to be an answering question session or kind of a debate. I think if you can just make your comments known and just generally ask questions, that'd be great. Thank you. So you folks, 410 South High Street.
Good evening. My name is Brian Nagel. I'm Land Use Counsel for Macquarie Harvey for the applicant. Obviously, my client filed an application for preliminary land development for the redevelopment of the Burger King site. The proposed, the proposed redevelopment is a mixed-use building with 125 apartments and approximately 9,200 square feet of retail. Can everybody hear me okay? Great. It's got 145 parking spaces with an additional 25 bonus parking spaces as part of the development project. I want to just point out upfront, I think the members of the Planning Commission are aware of this, but just for those who might not know, this is not an area of the borough where student housing is permitted. So this is not a student housing project. It cannot be a student housing project under the Borough ordinances. After we filed the land development application, just in terms of process, there's a number of reports, engineering plans that are reviewed by the Borough consultants. So we've received letters recently from the Borough consultants. So the next step for us in this process is to, all of our consultants who you'll hear from tonight when we give an overview of this project, will draft responsive letters to what we received from the Borough consultants to address any issues that they've raised under the subdivision and land development ordinance or otherwise. You're going to hear from our, from the developer. You're going to hear from the civil engineer. You're going to hear from the traffic and parking engineer, and briefly from the architect this evening. You will not see tonight what the building's going to look like, because we don't have that finished yet. But we will have that at the April meeting. So there's no, as part of this process this evening, there's no action item for the Planning Commission, because this is not ripe for a recommendation to Borough Council. We have to go through the whole process of addressing what the consultants have raised, answering the questions of the Planning Commission. And that's, that's going to take a few meetings to do that. And, you know, as we get comments, we have to turn around responses and address things and make tweaks on the plan based on the comments that we get and address different issues. So that takes time. We will have our responsive letters, I suspect, all submitted before the regular meeting of the April Planning Commission, and be back here at that time. And we will also, by then, we expect, have a rendering or an elevation of what the building actually will look like. So that's just an introduction. With that, I think I'd like to introduce Pete Stas to give an overview about the developer.
Good evening. Pete Stas, Core Development. We're located at 283 Second Street Pike, Southampton, PA. So I wanted to take just a few minutes to, I don't know if there's a, take this off. Do you mind controlling that?
No.
Can everyone hear me okay? So I appreciate everyone's time to come here about the project. I wanted to take a minute to introduce our company. I think it's really important, because I truly believe the values that we believe in, in real estate and community may match the values of what some people here do. So first of all, I'd like to just introduce myself. I do not live in Westchester Borough. I live in West Bradford. I've lived in Chester County for 25 years, and have raised, my wife and I have raised our four kids in Chester County for the last 20. I've been drawn to Westchester, like many people. We're very passionate about town centers, and because Westchester is so close to where I live, we spend a lot of time here. I work a day or two a month out of the market house on Church Street, which is a beautiful space. It's a co-working space. I'd recommend you go there. My son regularly plays basketball at the Melton Center. We're a supporter of the Melton Center. And my kids off and on work at Nudie's Cafe and Paint and Plate. And my 14-year-old daughter is addicted to Insomnia Cookies, so we're there quite a bit. And of course, we're, like many people, visit many of the wonderful restaurants in Westchester. Next. So this is a little bit about our company, but just a few comments I would say is we are passionate about creating outstanding spaces that promote a more vibrant and social community inside and outside the communities that we build in. We focus on both adaptive reuse of existing buildings and ground-up infill in town centers throughout the region. We're also very, we're passionate about vibrant town centers, and we've developed in a handful of them, and feel, obviously feel that Westchester meets that criteria. Next page. So just briefly on this, and I think this is something that differentiates us from other developers, many developers. We think about real estate not as a transactional process. We're not building to sell this and make a profit a year from now, three years from now. We look at this as a long-term investment into the building and into the community. As a result, we make long-term decisions on construction, design, and operations. So we're thinking about the materials we're using and how they will look five years from now, 10 years from now. That's important to us. The mechanical systems, everything, everything we think about is on a long-term perspective. We're vertically integrated. So when we're building these, again, there's developers that were billed and then they sell. We're thinking about managing that building, because we self-manage all of our buildings. So we're thinking about how do you manage the trash? How do you operate that efficiently? How do you, all the different operations of a building, we think about quite a bit. We also do a lot of our own interior design work. We self, we do all of our construction management work, because we think that's just such an integral part of development. So next page. And I'm just going to briefly mention one project, because I think it is applicable in some ways. We recently finished the Cricket Flats in Ardmore. It's located at 65 Cricket Avenue. It has 77 units and 11,000 square foot of retail. Much, you know, through that process of taking this through land development, you know, there were a lot of questions and a lot of comments. And I can happily say that our tenants, our neighbors, Lower Marion Township, have all embraced the building and really feel like it's been a compliment to the town center of Ardmore. And at the urging of Lower, from the Lower Marion Township urged us to submit it for some awards, particularly the Montgomery, Montgomery Award, which is an award from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and they recognize the product for exceptional infill project. They also recognize it as a transit-oriented development. It also is recognized for its context to sensitive design, which is really the massing of the building relative to streetscape and the collaborative public process that we took. It's an award that they offer once a year, and they don't typically offer it, not every year do they give it out to one that is a town center. So we were proud of that. And then we were also awarded the Best in American Living Award from the National Association of Home Builders Award. And I would also urge you, we spent a lot of time with, through a public process, and I would urge you to speak to Ernie McNeely, who was, if you're not familiar with Ernie, Ernie was the Borough Manager for many years and was the, for nine years, I can't believe it's been that long already, but nine years, he's been the manager at Lower Marion. And he said welcome to, he offered to me that anyone would like to speak to him about this project, that project, I should say, feel free to do so. So we are excited to talk to you about the Burger King site and, and our project, proposed project. And I'd also like to say I'm really proud of the team we assembled. Only, I'm pointing one person out, but Bernardin, it is our first time working with Bernardin, and I've worked with a number of different architects over the years, but I felt like Bernardin has done a lot of work in the borough and happened to design some of the larger buildings in the borough that I think are very attractive in the newer buildings in the borough. And I felt like it was the right choice to go with Bernardin. So we're happy to see them on the team, along with not shortchanging any of our other consultants, which you hear from tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. I'm Dave Rentschler with RE Engineering. I'm the Site Civil Project Engineer for, for the project. Is it possible to get the land development plans up there? A little bit about myself. You know, I've been doing land development projects for 25 years in Chester County. I also live in West Bradford. I've worked on the Chestnut Street building right here, the apartment building with Eli Khan years ago, while I was employed at another company. Sure thing. That makes, that makes a lot, a lot of difference. But anyways, if you could pull up sheet two, is that me or you? Yep. Okay, so I'm sure most of the people in here are familiar with the existing Burger King site, located 410 South High Street. It's basically the entire block along South High Street in between Dean and Price Streets. Dean Street being to the north and, and Price being to the south. What you see on that, on this sheet is basically the existing Burger King and its parking area in the hatched, the darker area in the middle of the plan. As part of this project, all of that will be removed. The, the access drive coming off of High Street will be removed. The driveway that's existing on Price Street is going to remain, and there will be a new driveway proposed off of Dean. You know, the property does also partially back up to Boxwood Alley. And then also along the rear is a condominium subdivision that was done back in the mid 80s. Basically, the site topography, so Dean Street is approximately 12 feet higher than Price. So if you're looking at the plan, everything kind of slopes from left to right. Stormwater runoff currently, the majority of it goes down near the driveway along Price Street. There's a set of inlets there that capture it and then take it further to the south on Boxwood Alley, as Boxwood Alley extends south. We did do some infiltration testing along the back property line where our stormwater management will take place. We've got good results. So that, that rear property line area is the area where the stormwater management for the site will, will take place. Go to the next sheet, sheet three. So basically, what you're seeing here on this sheet is, is the footprint of the building. You know, the footprint of the building, if you include the courtyards, is approximately 50,000 square feet as part of the project. You can see the new access from Dean Street, which is a one-way. As part of the project, you can see the new access from Dean Street, which is a one-way. So that'll be a right-in, right-out access to the, the upper garage. And you can see along the perimeter of the, the entire site, you know, all the existing sidewalks are, are planned to be replaced. You know, something this size and scope of construction. Plus, you know, the condition of some of those sidewalks now, you know, are going to be required to, to replace them and, and make them safe to, to walk on. We're not requesting any variances. We, we meet all the area and bulk requirements for the, for the town center zoning district. Town center zoning district allows up to 95% impervious coverage. We're right around 89% impervious coverage. And along the, the rear of that building, I guess on this plan, you can kind of see it. That rectangular area, there are going to be planter beds. And underneath those planter beds is where the stormwater management will take place. Next sheet. Please. So, so this sheet is basically showing the, the parking garages. You know, as I, as I discussed earlier, the site slopes from Dean to Price. So the two entrance drives are going to be at two different levels. So on the top of this sheet, you'll, you'll see the, we call the lower or Price Street parking level. This level is going to be strictly dedicated to residential parking. And you can see along the top of that plan, along High Street, there's double park spaces there. There are the 25 bonus spaces that, that'll be assigned to, to residents. On the, on the lower half of the plan, you'll see the, the part, what we call the upper parking garage or the Dean Street level parking garage. And that's going to be strictly for commercial parking, for the retail uses. You know, the parking study, make our, our traffic engineer prepared, you know, required. 144 total spaces for the project. You know, between the two levels, we have 145 regular parking spaces plus the 25 bonus spaces. So we're exceeding what, what the parking study required. And as far as stormwater management, I don't know if we want to go, go to like sheet seven. That might be the best way to, to show it. One more. Yep. So basically the, the stormwater management is going to be constructed of three concrete vaults. And they're going to operate in a series. Again, with the topography of the site, you know, the existing grade along that back property line also falls from left to right or north to south. So, so the vaults will be constructed in, you know, in existing grade. So it's the, the bottom of the vaults will be into natural grade. They're not going to be constructed in fill or anything like that. They're going to capture the, the uppermost vault or Vault Three will capture about two-thirds of, of the runoff. Will enter Vault Three first. And the overflow will then go into Vault Two. Vault Two will capture the other third of the building and courtyard area. And will infiltrate within, in that vault. And when that one overflows, it'll go into Vault One, which is closest to Price Street. And when that one overflows, it'll enter the existing storm sewer system in, in Price Street where it's currently going now. We're, we're infiltrating more than what's required by the, the stormwater ordinance. And we're lowering our peak rates at the same time. So we're detaining all that runoff and we're, we're letting it out slower than it was pre-developed. With the, the factors of safety built in that, that the stormwater ordinance requires, for instance, you know, stormwater ordinance requires us to assume 40% of the existing impervious coverage. So basically 40% of the Burger King site as it exists now, we, we have to consider 40% of that as being meadow, which doesn't have a whole lot of runoff when it rains. And then with our infiltration rates, you know, we're only using half of what we actually got in the field for infiltration rates. So there's, there's several safety factors built into, to the calculations, which are typical for pretty much any project in Chester County. The project's going to have more than one acre of, of earth disturbance. So we will be required to get an NPDS permit from DEP. We're going to need a review and approval for the erosion and sediment pollution control plans from the Chester County Conservation District. So there's going to be, you know, at least a couple of other outside agencies looking at the stormwater design and, and erosion control. We are asking for two waivers. One, I think the borough, I know, I believe has approved in the, in the past. And it's from, you know, the Saldo section, you know, 306 J3, which whenever you're providing infiltration on a site, they request that it be set back at least 10 feet from a basement or a subgrade element. We're requesting that to be reduced. You know, basically our subgrade element is a parking garage. It's not like a living space of a home or, or something that's going to be utilized as a retail area or anything like that. It, it's, it's strictly parking. We're also going to take some precautions to ensure that the infiltration from those facilities does not work its way into that garage. And it's not all of the infiltration areas. It's really just the, the upper vault, more or less is, is above, the bottom of the upper vault, vault is above the, the lower parking garage level. The second waiver, I, I requested, I'm not even sure if we need, I, this is in kind of the, the Act 167 Stormwater Ordinance. That's the countywide ordinance. And it states like, if you, if you're receiving runoff from different areas that, and you're doing infiltration from different areas, that the bottom of the infiltration area be above your lowest subgrade element. So that, I kind of just explained what was going on there. You know, one of our vaults is higher than the lower parking garage subgrade element. But again, we're going to take measures to mitigate any, any possible, you know, infiltration of water into the parking garage. And I think that's about all I have. I guess next we'll bring up Mr. John Witchner from McMahon.
Good evening, John Witchner with McMahon Associates. Much like Dave, I've been in the industry for almost 25 years specializing in transportation engineering, parking studies, traffic impact studies, and then interfacing and coordinating with PennDOT for any highway occupancy permits and other, you know, land development requirements through the PennDOT process. We really took a look at a couple of different aspects of this project, first being parking and the second being the traffic impact study. Focusing with parking, I guess first and foremost, we review the borough's town center ordinance. And what the town center ordinance requires from a, a parking perspective is to meet the demand of the expected, of the anticipated uses, namely residential and retail spaces, retail space. And the, the borough ordinance references two different, two different sources. The Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual, and we're up to the fifth edition at this point. And then also the borough allows for shared parking for mixed-use developments. Really it's because for different uses, peaks and peak hours of different uses occur at different times. Now that we're, we're in a little bit of a different situation with some of the parking, parking fields being designated at this time, one for residence, one for commercial space. But we really use the, the ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Manual and the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Study as our guiding principles for this analysis. We then, we then took a look at, the ITE has data at hundreds of existing sites across the country. Actually thousands of sites of hundreds of different uses, multifamily residential, single-family residential, office buildings, shopping centers, libraries, any, you know, any other kind of uses, convenience stores, things like that. And we focused on the multifamily data that ITE has published based upon independent variable of number of units. And it, and it provides a required parking demand, an, an average peak parking demand on two different types of statistics. One is the average peak or a rate, and the other is a regression equation, which statistically makes it even more fine-tuned from a data perspective. So we have a parking demand for the residential. Then we did the same analysis based upon about 9,200 square feet of commercial space. And then we add those two, we really sum those up. We obviously have to accommodate the residential. We have to accommodate the retail space. Based upon that data, we're looking at a demand of between 139 and 144 spaces. I had recommended to the applicant to go with 144 as, as a, as a anticipated parking demand for this site. Again, we also took a look at the ULI Shared Parking Analysis. In some, in some instances, there are shared parking between retail and residential. The way this may be laid out and how it may be operated, we didn't necessarily want to take those reductions at this time to give us a little bit of flexibility in that operation. We did submit that to the borough and it was reviewed by the borough's traffic consultant. The second aspect is the traffic impact study. All land development applications, or most of them anyway, require the submission of a traffic impact study. We really started that process back in December. And, and we actually have two agencies or review entities that we need to satisfy. One is the Borough's Traffic Consultant in the borough itself. And the second is PennDOT. Because we see the access on Price Street, Price Street is a state-maintained roadway. So any work within the right-of-way, any access to a state-maintained roadway does require a PennDOT permit. We start the traffic study with a traffic, a traffic impact study scoping application. This is really done before the traffic study has even started. It's a way for all reviewing agencies to get on the same page with agreeing on assumptions, methodologies, which intersections to study, how we present our traffic study through, starting at the beginning of the process. That coordination took through, took through, through February. And as part of our traffic study, I'm going to go through it step by step. First step is really traffic counts at the study area intersections. We, we studied the intersection of High Street and Dean Street, High Street and Magnolia Street, High Street and Price Street, as well as the two access driveways, one to Dean Street and one to Price. As Dave had mentioned before, Dean Street is a, is, has a one-way nature to it in the northbound direction. We're not proposing to change that. That, so that will effectively act as a right-in, right-out driveway. And the access to Price Street is proposed to be a full-access driveway. And again, under the jurisdiction or reviewing, you know, review and approval of both the borough's traffic engineer as well as PennDOT. We then move toward future conditions, both without our development and with our development. And that allows us to take an apples-to-apples comparison. What, how do the intersections operate in the future without the development? And then how will they operate with development? In order to look at the future conditions, we apply growth factors that are published by PennDOT for these types of roadways in Chester County. It's really based upon a county, county-by-county growth factor. And we analyze these intersections, much like school, they're given letter grades. Letter A being, level of service A being the best, level of service F being the worst. So now we have future no-build conditions. We then reference a different Institute of Transportation Engineers manual, the Trip Generation Manual. They've done thousands of studies from a trip perspective at hundreds of land uses throughout the country of existing sites. And again, using those rates and regression equations determining how many trips in each of the peak hours would be generated by development with a mix of residential and retail uses. Because of the mix of uses, we typically study the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour for residential uses. And then for retail, we study the evening peak hours and Saturday midday peak hours. And because we have this mix of uses, we looked at the morning peak hour, the afternoon peak hour, and then that Saturday midday peak hour, so three different peak hours. We then distribute that traffic to the roadway network to determine future conditions in the future, future year, future conditions in the, in the build scenario. We then, we're then able to compare those levels of service, future conditions without development and future conditions with development, and determine some, any kind of improvements that may be necessary to driveway, driveways or off-site intersections. In future conditions without the development, there's, most intersections operate level of service C, which is deemed acceptable level of service from the borough ordinance. With the exception of a couple of movements over at the High Street and Price Street intersection, operating a level of service D. I believe it's in the morning peak hour. We then took a look at mitigation techniques for, specifically for that intersection. And we're, we had seen that some of the allocation of green time isn't necessarily as efficient as it could be based upon the different ebbs and flows of traffic patterns throughout the course of the day. So we've identified and had recommended to the, to the applicant to look at re-timing and reallocating some green time at that intersection to then bring that level of service back to a level of service C. And again, deemed acceptable in the borough ordinance as well as by PennDOT. And at this, and in terms of the driveways, driveways operate level of service B or better for, for both driveways. One on Dean Street, one onto Price Street. At this point, we have received a review letter from, from the borough's traffic engineer. But again, as I mentioned, we, we kind of have a dual path here that we're taking concurrently, much like every other land development application. We have received a review letter from the borough's traffic engineer. We also are waiting for a review letter from PennDOT. You know, they're submitted at the same time. We collect review letters. We make sure that there are no conflicting comments. And then we revise and, and resubmit to both, to both reviewing agencies. And we're kind of in that, in that part of the project where we've gotten a first review from the borough's traffic engineer and waiting for comments from PennDOT at this time. So as Mr. Nagel had said, you know, we're here to, to take comments from planning commission, borough consultants and others. Take that information back, wait for additional review letters from outside agencies, in my case, PennDOT, and then make that resubmission back to the borough for future, future meetings in front of the, in front of the planning commission. Guess at this time I maybe turn it back to Brian.
I think I want to introduce the architect, Timothy Cassidy, just to tell us a little bit about himself and the, yeah, you can, you can stay seated and just talk about your process and, you know, I, I talked a little bit at the beginning of the meeting about working on a rendering that shows what the building's going to look like. If you could do that briefly. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. So I'm here representing Bernardin this evening. And we've been retained for the design of the project. And hopefully, many of you will be familiar with our work. Most recently, we completed the 44 West project over on Gay and Church Streets. And I think that's been pretty successful. We've, our office is right here in the borough, so I don't live in the borough, but I just work a couple of blocks from here and consider myself a citizen of the town, so to speak. And have been working here on and off in the borough for years, including with Mr. McKenna, Mr. Comida for years. So we are in the, at the point right now where we have been looking at the overall layout and programming of the building. But now we are starting to really develop the architectural design of the building. And as Brian already explained, at the April 25th meeting, we plan to be back here and to make a full presentation at that time of what the exterior of the building will look like. look like. Okay?
Thank you, Timothy. So that concludes our overview of the project. Again, like I said, we're waiting to get some review letters. One thing I want to clarify, coming off of John's comments about the traffic, we are still waiting for that PennDOT letter. So probably, Mr. Wishner won't issue a letter until he has, in addition to the Borough's Traffic Consultant letter, also the PennDOT letter. So when that's ready, in terms of his responsive comments, is going to depend on when we get the PennDOT letter. So that might be in time for the April meeting. It may not be. I kind of expect it will be, but we don't really know that, so I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. Okay, so our Borough Consultants, do you have anything you'd like to say at this point, Mr. Cometta?
Thanks, Jason. Tom Cometta, Town Planner and Landscape Architect since 1988 for the Borough. So we had submitted review comments March 16th and look forward to receiving the responses. I just wanted to mention, on a high level, on the strength of the presentation that Mr. Stas made and the forthcoming presentation that Mr. Cassidy will make, I think it would be useful to present some form of site analysis to inform the Planning Commission, Borough Council, the public about, you know, the design criteria that they're considering and that they will bring forward in terms of the neighborhood. So hopefully that'll be a transition item. In our review, there were four or five overarching items that I look forward to seeing the response on. And one is identified in our comment 1.2, which is to seek clarification on how the applicant interpreted that the built-to-line front yard matches existing adjacent setbacks. And it will be interesting to see what the word adjacent is in their interpretation. Because in fact, there, as we know, there are three frontages because it's a corner lot and it enjoys adjacency with properties both on Dean and Price. And then on High, obviously have to look north and south. Second, on the subject of the recreation area, in our comment 8.2, we asked the applicant for clarification on how they interpret that they've complied with a section of the zoning ordinance, 112, 911, and then a section of the Saldau, 97, 38D. There are many performance standards and design criteria in both of those sections and we hope that there's some more information to clarify the extent to which they believe they've met those standards. The next item is kind of wrapped into landscape, streetscape, street trees. We have six comments in that regard. It appears that the five street trees along High Street will be safe. We're just asking for some clarification on tree protection. It may be that one of the four genko trees on Dean can be saved, perhaps more than one. And then we asked for certain details to hardwire the application into the Saldau design standards. Another one, when I arrived in the Borough in 1973, the High Street School was there. And, you know, I was familiar with that site at that time before the building was demolished and Burger King came in. And I'm also familiar with USGS maps that show the Plum Run Tributary. A 1901 USGS map of the Wilmington-Westchester quadrangle, 15 and a half minute quadrangle, shows the Plum Run Tributary coming up right to the doorstep of this site. And so, a question, when I looked at a 1937 aerial photograph to determine where that alignment went and where did it go after the High Street School was built, I think that we need to get information to clarify what happened to the stream. Did it go in a pipe between the northeast curb cut along High to the southwest inlet? Or does it run parallel to the western property line in that 18 to 19 foot wide parcel B? So we asked for clarification on that. And then finally, on the forthcoming architectural plans, in looking at the spot elevations and all the information available on hand, it appears that there might be a seven-foot differential in the way the grade worked. The civil engineer talked about a 12-foot grade difference from Dean to Price. When you look at all the spot elevations and all the drawings back and forth, civil, the parking, the first floor elevations of certain levels, it will be interesting in the forthcoming plans to see what the actual building heights would be. So we're hopeful that that will be clarified in the next submission. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cometta.
Yeah.
Anything? You don't, they don't feel compelled, just?
Yeah, real quick, Jason. My name's Nate Klein. I'm the Borough Engineer. I work for Panoni. Our office is right over on Church and Marcus Street, so you've probably seen me on my somewhat daily walk to Carlina's for lunch. We'll take our role, really as kind of helping quarterback with Kevin Gore here, the whole project. If this project goes to fruition, we take the lead on the stormwater management reviews, reviewing the various code requirements, coordinating with Tom, Kelly, Kevin during the whole course of the project. So we've issued our review comments tonight. We're really just here, I'm here really just to listen to the feedback tonight from the residents. Between that, the resubmission, we'll then edit our comments, go forward. And then if and when this project were ever to get to fruition, we'd be involved with the construction management, helping that aspect of it because it would be a complicated site from a construction standpoint as well. Like the applicant said, there's many levels of review that still need to happen. We're one part of it on behalf of the Borough. We work for the Borough. In addition to that, we have the D E P in the Conservation District. There'll be a secondary review specifically regarding stormwater management, erosion control, things of that nature. So a lot of steps in the process. We're at the first step. We're here to listen tonight, get the feedback, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Goff, I'm the Traffic Engineer with Remington and Vernick Engineers. I also want to say that this is just the first submission. We did issue our review letter and several of the review comments included engineering concerns related to the level of service. So McMahon Engineering, the applicant's traffic engineer, did reference level of service. Level of service is basically how long you're waiting at an intersection. We also had comments related to queue length, so how many cars are backed up at an intersection to make sure the cars are not blocking the driveways or intersections. We also had comments related to parking. So our role in this review process is to make sure that the final product is compliant with the Borough Ordinance. Again, this is the first submission. We submitted very, several comments and we will review again on the second submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. So now what we'll do is we'll throw it back to us, the Planning Commission, and we'll go through and have questions and comments.
Just one follow-up comment on something that Mr. Klein mentioned. We will, we will ultimately have a construction management plan that details, you know, the when and the how, sidewalk closures, things of that nature. That's, that's part of what we normally do in a project of this size. And so we will have that and you'll be informed of, you know, estimated schedules and things of that nature, you know, once we get to the point where we're in, you know, we have an approved project. So there's a little ways to come, but that is something that will be put together by the applicant. It will be reviewed by the Borough and its consultants in due course. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. So we'll throw it back to us, the Planning Commission, and with any questions, comments, concerns, whatever we have, and we'll kind of take it one by one. I won't necessarily start, but what I'll start with is just kind of a backup overview. This is a preliminary review. There's a preliminary review and a final view, final review. So like Mr. Nagel was saying, we're not going to vote or act on this tonight. We're just taking in information, learning about this as much as everyone else is. And then next month, we will most likely vote on a preliminary review set of drawings. Most likely would remain to be determined what we would do next, but the next thing then would be, would go to a final set of drawings, which then we would act on that. And, you know, through that whole process, there's review, there's reports and reviews and just that back and forth. And of course, if you come to meetings, you would be able to comment. One other item is, Planning Commission has a work session and a voting session. Sure, right now, we're at the voting session. The week before that is the, is the work session. And typically, there is really no one there in terms of the public. It's just us reviewing the drawings. Last week, we had a little bit of a technical glitch trying to get the screen to work, but we did that. And we do not have to necessarily take comments in a work session, but the public is welcome to come. So if you do come to a work session, not that you're not welcome, I don't know if we necessarily will always take comments. So the voting session is the one it's much more important for, but you are welcome to come. This is in the Town Center District as everyone's talking. It is what is considered, like on a first blush kind of a review, is what is called a by right project, meaning that they're not seeking variances. They, the applicant believes that they are completely within the zoning ordinance in terms of massing and setbacks and parking and all that stuff, and they can do that on the site. So this is an interesting project in that way that it's considered basically by right. So now it's just a matter of just getting into the details and figuring out how the building works and how it works on the site and in the town. The last item, that was my last item. So I'll throw it to Mr. Clapp, if you would like to start.
Thanks, Jason. I guess first, I would like to echo Mr. Cometta's comments regarding first, the setbacks. We, that was something I noted regarding, you know, front yard definition, how they're, how they're defining adjacent properties because of it's a corner lot. In fact, the entire lot, there are three frontages. So I'm not going to repeat Mr. Cometta's comments, but I do want to echo them. Similarly, the issue of height, there are some basic elevations provided in the impact study that's available on the website. And my initial review of those indicate that there might be an exceedance of the 45-foot maximum height within the Town Center District, but I would like to understand where, where they're measuring from and to on those, on that height evaluation. As far as traffic and parking go, traffic first, this is going to, I don't know if it's going to impact, but it is going to have to integrate with, and there might be potential conflicts with the High Street Corridor Pedestrian Improvement Project, which I understand is currently on track to start construction next year in 2024. So I just want to make sure that that is being considered. That's being, I'm assuming since you're in communication with PennDOT, you're coordinating with them on that as well. One thing I wanted to note about the traffic going in and out of the garages, and thanks for clarifying residential versus retail parking. I understand and I know the assumptions are based on, you know, I T guidelines and they all are valid. The one thing I would like, maybe some specific issues addressed specific to this site are the Dean Street. These are, these are problem areas from my experience as a Borough resident. Price Street and Dean Street, you have to make a right onto High Street to get onto Magnolia to go east or north. Any additional traffic at that intersection could cause problems. Same with Price Street. Now we're, we're back to left turns out of Burger King, now a large apartment building and retail space, and left turns into that. That area of Price Street already has parking on both sides and they park right up, folks park right up to Boxwood Alley. It creates a bottleneck. Any more traffic there, I understand the queues, I kind of, you know, I read through the new trips, the additional queuing that will happen. I think it might be a little understated, the potential impact of the traffic. And I guess I just... That was not my intent. I was not looking for applause. One question I do have, and I didn't see it on the plans or in the study, if those new trips included commercial or municipal vehicles, deliveries, waste pickup, any trucks going in and out, I didn't know if that was accounted for besides just regular vehicular And then I heard that traffic signaling or re-timing of the traffic signaling was being considered or was recommended to the developer. I just want to make sure, I'd like to understand if the developer's then taking that to the Borough or to PennDOT and coordinating that with them. How are we acting on those recommendations? How are we moving forward with those? And then from the architect, Mr. Cassidy, I'm just curious, and I'm not asking you to answer this now, but in your presentation, I'm assuming you'll include any design, not just the design guidelines that you're following, but any examples in the Borough that you're looking to as inspiration or whatever for the exterior, exterior of the building, just to ensure it's consistent with our historical architecture. And then, let's see, I think, I think that's most of my higher-level comments, Jason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to answer any of these questions? You're just taking notes.
Yeah, and I apologize. I ran through those pretty quickly. I didn't know if they were going to comment response or not.
Not anyway. I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot. I just give you the opportunity if you want.
I mean, I, if we feel compelled, we will, but I think we have ample time and we have to go back and prepare our reviews and some changes. And I think it'd be better, we'll make note of all the comments so that we are sure to address them when, when we return. If there's something specific you really want us to respond to, we'd be happy to do that.
All right. Just give a holler and we'll... Mr. Dockery.
Thank you all for, for being here. And I want to start by saying that I'm grateful for all the support we have. So I have lots of concerns about the parking, about the traffic, but luckily, we have, you know, paid professionals who can address these issues. And I'm looking forward to the responses to the, to the letters. Kevin, I wanted to ask you, I wasn't completely clear on the two variances from the Saldau at the very beginning. Do you mind talking us through that and any other hypothetical just concerns? It's a large project. You understand it better than any of us, so maybe you can just address those two.
Yeah, so they're not variances, they're waivers from the stormwater requirements. I'd rather either their engineer repeat that or have Nate answer those questions.
Yeah, so the, the two waivers are basically strictly dealing with infiltration of the stormwater. And the intent of the, the ordinance is, you know, to prevent infiltration of stormwater, which is a good thing, but if you do it right next to a house with a basement, it's not necessarily a good thing if that water is infiltrating and going horizontally then into somebody's basement. So, you know, the ordinance requires a certain separation distance, you know, from basically the footprint of where you're infiltrating that water into the ground to another building with subgrade elements. Okay? So the waivers we're requesting are dealing with, you know, the distance between our infiltration facility and our building itself, which the subgrade element is a parking garage. So I don't know if that helps you. Well, horizontal distance is, is the one waiver and the other waiver is vertical distance. Well, horizontal distance is, is the one waiver and the other waiver is vertical distance. So, yeah.
I'll just be interested to see as we get more details on the building itself, how that's going to affect the experience of the building from the outside. Could we bring up one sheet that shows the section cuts through the building? I think that would be really helpful.
It's in the, it's in the impact study? Yeah. It's in the impact study?
So my, my, the concern I want to talk about this evening has to do with the setbacks we already talked about. You know, how are we judging a street wall on this building, which is the entire, the entire block? One of the comments that Mr. Comida made regarding the SALDO had to do with where that setback on the front is. And you have the overhang, I believe. Scroll down. So there are three section cuts, and you see on that one how much higher the, let's say the sidewalk that's adjacent to the structure underneath the residential overhang is to the sidewalk on High Street. Without elevations and more detailed architectural drawings, not completely sure, but I believe that the facade that's going to be created here is not going to be, it's not going to be fronting High Street in a way that our borough seeks to do, in the way that the rest of, let's say, the, the commercial buildings along High Street do. So we're going to have these, we're going to have an elevated, I think, sidewalk. And at the very beginning at Dean Street, that's going to be on grade. But as you, you know, progress down, you're going to be, you're going to have these two different levels, the, the further you go, and you pass all the commercial, and then you're going to walk down. I'm not sure if that actually violates SALDO requirements about where that front door of your residential shop is, but it is going to create a, you know, what is that front, what is that wall on High Street going to be like? What's the experience walking down the sidewalk where that lower guy is walking? And I think that the site right now is a Burger King, and it's not doing anything for the sidewalk. I'd love to see the shops that, you know, we love, that's so much part of the character, the, the small, narrow storefronts continue down along the sidewalk, meet the sidewalk. And you're going to, it's going to bite into your structured parking. You're going to have to re-fenangle your residential, and you're probably going to lose some units. But bringing the storefront all along the, the sidewalk, all the way down, is going to make a huge difference to the experience of that and the way that it's going to hypothetically contribute and not just be detrimental to the character of the borough. And the last thing I wanted to say is that one of the, one of my favorite developments, recent development, kind of recent developments in Westchester is what some people call Burger View, right? It's on the other side, right? It's on an alley. And that doesn't actually probably comply. It doesn't, you know, they had to get zoning variances for that. But when they were developing Burger View, they went to Darlington Street and they measured the facades of those little townhouses there. And they measured the window placements and they recreated the kind of fine-grained urban fabric we have here in the boroughs. They recreated the fabric we have at Darlington or New Street, and they've created this really lovely row of condominiums back there. And this, the back of this structure is going to be detrimental. And I would have loved to see on this site, I'm grateful that something is happening here and, but I would have loved to see something that was more in tune with the borough, like that project, which is just such a great project that reflects the character of the borough.
Mr. West.
So I won't spend too much time up. I agree with the comments that have been mentioned about traffic and the building bulk. And I think that's the biggest thing I'd like to see more information on, either addressed as an overview or at next month's meeting. I know the review letters really cited a lot of design criteria and traffic, things according to the ordinance that don't seem to be reflected in the current plan. I think that the building bulk, to me, is the biggest thing. The setbacks have been talked about, how that, how we come up with that for this building. The height also, I think it's 45 feet in the town center district. And I think that's at Dean Street, but according to the ordinance, it has to be the average height. So we have building frontage on Dean, High Street and Price Street, and I'm not sure that it meets that requirement, but I'll be interested to hear about the bulk, the setbacks and that. In terms of traffic, there was a lot of comments already, some of the questions on it. One thing I'd be looking forward, two things in addition to what was talked about, site distance is a big issue with, maybe not High Street as much as Dean because High Street's signalized, but Dean Street is, Mr. Clapp mentioned, there's a jog turn with that. And you already have to lean out and look at parked, beyond parked cars and buildings when you're looking north. Now, if it's south and you have that same condition, that seems to be a real impediment to me. So I'd be interested in seeing the site distance specifications on the plan and how this meets that. Another question that was brought up was stack parking, which I think is good, but our ordinance points out that it has, it's very specific in what that could be used for. And I don't know that we've heard the details on that, that if someone's parked behind a resident's car, how are they going to get out if it's a leased space or however, you know, that's going to be handled. So I'd like to see more information, which was addressed in our review letters. And I'm just highlighting a couple of things that I'll be really interested in seeing. I did mention off-street loading, but there's commercial here. I don't see any space set aside for off-street loading, which seems really important for traffic congestion or, or blocks that occur through the day. So there's that. And also, if people are moving in and out, it seems pretty tight in the garage already. So is an area set aside for that so it's safe and not causing problems during the I think that's most of it. I would say that I, I, I see the building, the, the design of a mixed-use building here are great. I went to High Street School, was a, it was a large building, but it was setback from the property lines. It was, it was a really, this is a prominent location. So I don't think a larger building is, is a problem, but if it's right up to the street, if it's impeding the traffic flows along it, that's going to be a concern in the design of, as, as the review letter said, there's a lot of design criteria that help a large building transition into the neighborhood. And I just think we need to see more that was already pointed out in the review letter. So as everyone said, I'm looking, I'm interested in hearing more details as they come out.
Thank you. My comments and questions are if it may be helpful to go to the parking plans. I don't know if they're in that report or if you have to go back to the, the site plans. The commercial parking or the customer parking coming off of Dean is pretty problematic to me. Now, I think there is a High Street, the High Street corridor improvements, I was trying to just look through. I, I think Dean Street is supposed to get a light? It's not? Okay, it's not supposed to get a light. So that, so that kind of creates part of the problem. Yeah, there we go. So on the bottom of the plan on the left is, is the Dean Street entrance, and that's, I've learned and I was curious about that, is, is that's for customer parking essentially. The, I think customers coming down church and then on to Dean and then having to leave, like has been kind of said here, having to leave out of Dean, which you're only allowed to make a right, is very problematic. And I think one way to alleviate that is to go, if you go to the top of that sheet, if you have extra spaces, you would be creating a ramp out to, out to, out to the Price Street entrance. So, you know, you would be cutting out those spaces, but apparently you have extra to spare. Also related to that is I'm wondering, I know this is a preliminary plan, but, you know, how many of those spaces are going to be taken away by columns and structure and whatnot in the, in, in either of those parts of the plan? But, but I do think that customers who don't necessarily know where they are and parking and all that kind of stuff, coming off of Dean is, is a problem. And I think if there's a way to get, and I understand the stacking of the parking and I appreciate that, but I think if it's coming off of Price, that would be better. Price, now, we have to remember that Burger King was here and there were customers coming in and out of that, basically that same curb cut off of Price for, for a long time. We're not used to it because it's been closed for a while. But it still does concern me slightly that I'm wondering if we can, you know, especially people coming off of going, say, eastbound on Price to make a left, that congests traffic and then also making a left out of the lot onto Price. So I just, I started to dig through the traffic study, but it, you know, are the left-hand turns prohibited there, similar to Dean? So that's just the, my parking concerns. In terms of the overview of the building, again, I'm not necessarily opposed to a, a big building on a, on a site. I'm not really afraid of that. The town center supports it. The 45-foot height limit, I do question if it does meet 45 feet because of the grade. I mean, our definition of building height is average height of finished grade, which, and that's the perimeter of building if I read it correctly. So my calculation is that there was no top of parapet or anything like that on the drawings. But it looks to me that the building height is at 465, 466. And I just curious if you guys can hit that? And if it, if you have a different calculation, I would want to, want to hear it. Again, there's not enough information relay, I think, have a discussion about it, but that was my initial calculations, kind of going around the site and looking at the spot The, to reiterate, trash loading and unloading, not only commercial trucks and trash trucks, but also residents when they're, you know, moving in and out of the place. Where will that occur? I think it can occur in the, in the parking areas, and that's fine. Just want to make sure, I noticed in the traffic studies, you know, about turning radiuses for big trucks and things like that, which again, brings me back to the Dean Street and that being a concern. The corner, in terms of the massing, Tom has kind of touched on this a little bit. So I'll kind of take away that, the street wall that appears to be happening on High Street, which is, I don't think that good. But I do understand that you have to do something with the parking because the parking's there. So as you come down High Street and then come around Price Street, there seems to be a tall building wall there. So the setback and any advantages that you may have gained from a setback for the residential, for the, for the retail, it kind of stops and it becomes a solid mass on that corner. And Price Street and High Street being kind of a gateway from the south, after you get past the university, especially to the town center. And this building being a big building, I think, you know, just think through as you're working through the, the details of the, what it looks like on the facade, you know, the, the gravity of that corner. I would love to see it be more open. And again, I do know that requires repositioning things on the inside. So I know that's not an easy task, but, and it, it might affect a number of apartments. I also don't have a problem with the number of apartments necessarily, but I think the town and the, the site can, it'll, it'll work. The minimum front yard was noted. I, I would agree with that. The construction, I am curious to see what's going on in construction. While it's a finite period, I mean, you know, just that, that whole area is, High Street and Price Street will be basically shut down on their sides for pedestrians. And that is a pretty solid pedestrian thoroughfare coming from the university. And the stormwater was pretty much explained. I'd like to hear more about that as you, as we go on. And that's it for me, really.
The advantage of being the last is that you can say, I agree with everything they said, and not have to say anything else. But I, I do have a few questions, though, that maybe be premature, but I'm, I'm curious to know, these 125 apartments, how big are they going to be? And are they going to be market rate? There's a reason I have an interest in this.
Yeah, it's, it's a market rate apartment building.
Right, but how big are the apartments roughly?
The, the two bed, there's a, a combination of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. And the, the one-bedrooms would be average around 700 square feet, and the two-bedrooms would be 11, 1150.
Okay, so, and, and I'm trying to picture how you can fit 125, 40, 40 apartments on each floor roughly in that, but you, you have to figure that part out. Okay. But thank you. So they're, they're going to be sort of normal size, they're not going to be tiny, in other words? Yeah, okay. Also, I think Mr. Comida raised this in his comments, these so-called recreation areas, which are just paved, and in fact, it's pointed out by the tree commission as well. What, I mean, can, Mr. Gore, can they get away with calling them recreation areas?
Yeah, Mr. Comida had that in his, in his letter. That was going to be one of my comments in my review as well. A lot of my comments were incorporated into all the other consultant letters, so I didn't feel need to double down on those same comments. That's something that we are definitely going to evaluate to ensure that any claimed recreation area meets the requirements in the ordinance for that. At first glance, it does not appear that it would meet those requirements for a recreation area.
Right, and if it doesn't, then they pay a fee in lieu of, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
All right, just, you, you're aware of this, right, fellas? Yeah, okay.
When next we come back.
Okay, yeah, that's good. And then I, I guess the, the question that Mr. Comida also raised was, and I think maybe Mr. Burl also, when we say, in, in these, everybody's been referring to the SALDO. Just so you know, that's the subdivision and land development ordinance. If, and in the SALDO, the, the requirement is that the, in the town center, that the street front be coordinate with the adjacent properties. But in this case, the adjacent properties are very different on north and south. So which one are you going to make it coordinate with? Do you have an idea yet? Is it going to be the, the north, north of Dean Street restaurants, a whole line of restaurants? Or is it going to be south of Dean, of Price Street, which is, becomes residential, right?
So again, we'll, we'll show you all this in detail next month, but the short answer of it is, is that we're going to be more aligned with the Dean Street Voodoo Cafe corner because as you're coming down High Street from the center of town and you're in the town center district, the buildings that have more of a commercial presence are closer to the sidewalk, as others have mentioned, coming down the street there. When you get down to Price Street, that's where the town center district ends. And when you get on the other side of Route 52 or on Price Street, but still on the west side of High Street, then those are mostly homes that have been converted into, you know, rentals and, and what have you on there. And they have greater setbacks because they're not commercial buildings. They were originally done, a single-family home's done through there. So since the character and the scale of what we're proposing is going to be more like what you, what you see in the center of town and coming down High Street to that point, that is the alignment that we're, you know, that we're more, we, that we consider ourselves to be more part of, and that it's, it's a change in character and a transition zone as you cross over Price Street. From there down to the university, the west side of the street is completely different from that point.
Right, I was, I thought you were going to say that, but thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. And, and again, we'll, we'll, we'll show you the, more of this next month. And I'm sorry, you know, not trying to be, of keep anybody in the dark on all this. It's just, it's a lot to cover, and we're trying to work through all of this in a methodic way. it's a lot to cover, and we're trying to work through all of this in a methodic way. And as far as the courtyards and the recreation space, those are all being, the, the designs of those are being developed and enhanced in ways that I'm confident are going to conform with the ordinance. And if you even look at the SALDO ordinance and, and you look at the references that are in the ordinance in terms of some of the precedents, one of the precedents that's in there is the courtyard inside of Chestnut Square, which we also did, and we have, you know, a very strong understanding as to how this all works and how to do it, and we're planning on, you know, following through and making similar quality spaces. So it'll all be beautiful, we just haven't quite gotten there yet, okay?
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I, I also could use a little clarification on the stacked parking, because I, I, I can't figure out how, what that's going to, how that's going to work. And, and I'm sure there are a lot of people here who are concerned about parking and traffic issues. In fact, maybe that's the main reason you're here, because that is going to have the most impact on the neighborhood. And I think that one of these guys pointed out that, oh yes, I think it was Mr. Burl, who said that the, the mass, the massing of that building is going to create site distance issues. And I'm thinking, you know, you have to be careful when you're putting a building that size that close to a corner. Maybe we have that throughout the town, and I'm just sort of making this up, but I, it is, it is a potential concern, I think, for everybody, particularly people who live in that neighborhood and have to use that intersection a lot. And I think everything else that I was concerned about, it will, will come out in, in the future discussions. So thank you very much for your time.
Tom?
Thank you. I just forgot one of my points that I wanted to bring up, and it's something that was already touched on, Mr. Clapp touched on it. The High Street or South High Street corridor study was just completed, I think, last year. And the Borough was a sponsor of it, so I have to, as a plan, as the planning commission, bring it up. Mr. Clapp looked at the status, and we believe PNDOT is working on phase one of it, which is safety improvements and some of the other improvements. But if you look at that study, there's different phases of it and different ideas. One of them was, involved this property as an offset to line Dean Street up with Magnolia. And I know that's a big, big objective, it was something that was done while that land is still undeveloped. But I do think it calls into, it highlights the need for site distances and crossing at that intersection, and I would like, as the applicants are looking at the design, to look at the feasibility of any of those things. Again, a lot, a lot of work's put into that. I think that the Borough would like, like us to bring it up and have any development address, not just the safety things, but the design aspects in that study. So we look forward to hearing about that study as well.
I think we're kind of done with our portion of this, so what I would do now is take any citizen comments. Sure. But, but do a little housekeeping first.
Before we start, I just want to remind everybody, let's do this in an orderly fashion. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and we will do our best to get to everybody's comments, and we would just ask that, you know, make sure you pay attention to what people are saying so we don't repeat comments with different residents, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Gore?
I'm Sam Walsh, 318 West Minor Street in Westchester. For the record, I am chair of the Westchester Historical Commission. For the record, I am a commercial real estate agent and Realtor. For the record, tonight, I am speaking as an individual and local historian. The Burger King project is a big project in this end of town, many of the homeowners are here tonight that may be affected. We have seen a transition from a modern Burger King back to a great school that goes back to the 1880s and 90s, and previous to that, a colonial farmstead that was part of the Sharpless Farm. And previous to that, it is thought to have been a Lenape seasonal Indian village. And by that, small groups of Lenape would come here on a seasonal basis, spring, summer, then maybe by fall head back to the river, the Delaware. It was not a palisaded type of village, a small number of huts, possibly six to eight huts. We're not talking about having a burial ground here, but this site had all the components for a great seasonal, small Indian settlement that moved back and forth in this area. That means it's possibly, possibly in the site preparation stages, you might be able to find some points and pottery shards, and so I'm hoping that the developer might keep an eye out, and if such items are found, that they would be saved, and we might be able to bring in the university or another borough body to take a look at those items. So that is one of the things, that's maybe the first history of that. And then, of course, comes the Sharpless Farm, and they built at that site because of what they knew from the Indians. It faced south, it had good water on the stream that Mr. Comida mentioned, that is still flowing out of there today, through the college and all the way into the Brandywine. The other side of the street, of course, was the Chester Creek Watershed. And up where we are talking about, that was a good place, because over in the Chester Creek Watershed, over by the Borough Depot and so on, is wetlands and bugs and mosquitoes. So the better place to be was right where our developer is. So we have that possibility there as my first point. It has seen a lot of history here. A second point is September 1797. And the, yeah.
We're, we're trying to keep comments to a certain amount of time.
Okay, can I go quickly and finish up here? I have two.
We'll give you one more minute, go ahead, but we're going to translate the comments.
The British troops passed by here in September 1777, there may have been a skirmish in the center of town where a couple of British were killed and buried somewhere in the borough. Later on, in seven, 1826, Lafayette coming in Rosedale Avenue and up High Street, passed right by this farmstead, and that celebration is going to be celebrated in 2025, and things are underway for that celebration already. So there are three historical points that I would like to call your attention to, and maybe the developer could do a set aside that someday, when the product, project is finished, would allow for some of that history
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Hi, my name's Lisa Crowless, I live at 25 Dean Street, which is cattacornered from the.
Did you say your name one more time, please?
Huh?
Say your name one more time.
Hi, my name is Lisa Crowless, I live at 25 Dean Street, which is directly cattacornered across the street from the Burger King property. So I'm the first house you come to off of High Street. So I work out of my house, so I have the opportunity to watch Dean Street every day, out my window. I was not three minutes, I'm just kidding. So there are two concerns I have, one is that there is a driveway being put in or planned for on Dean Street, we have limited parking on one side of Dean Street now, that's only partially permit, and then the rest down that street, so you're taking away residential parking with that, with that spot quite a bit, and it's used by all of us that live on Dean Street. So that's one. Secondly, I watch all the Cisco trucks come down the street and park every day in front of and behind High Street Cafe to make deliveries, and sometimes they're one too deep, I don't see how you're going to be able to come out of that driveway when they're delivering, and then a lot of times they park on High Street as well. So again, you've already made that issue about coming out of that driveway, and then making a right on High is going to be tough. It's tough today, so. So those are my two biggest concerns. I also don't have any idea of knowing how these projects are funded, but we're in the middle of a banking crisis, so I sort of would like to understand how developers get funding and how we're sure that it won't get dropped in the middle of construction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kendra Beitzel, 140 Dean Street, so I too am a Dean Street resident. I have concern that the parking study was performed on a Saturday. A lot of the parking that we see on our street is student use, and I can tell you, it is during the weekday when campus is in session. I also have concern of the pedestrian thoroughfare, and I have a question, I don't know if this is for you all, but as an apartment resident, will they be able to apply for guest passes? Or permit passes? That's a main concern of mine for the overflow parking that would be needed if that's allowed.
That's a good question, I don't know the direct answer to that, but we noted it.
Yeah, I, I've actually had some requests that we not allow residents of this building to get residential permit, parking permits.
Actually, hold on, hold on, Ms. Carroll. To the applicant, there, there was a question, and I, I think the parking consultant had mentioned it, when was the parking study done? Was it done on a Saturday?
Oh, sorry.
Just to kind of, just to kind of answer.
Yeah, there's, there's one element of the counts that happens for the retail, that happens on a Saturday, but no, the parking study was not, the counts were not solely on a Saturday, they were weekday AM and PM counts, but for a retail element, John could explain it better, but am I saying that correctly? For a retail element, you would have some Saturday counts?
Yes, Brian is correct from the traffic impact study, morning, afternoon, Saturday. For the parking study, there were no parking studies done on, around the surrounding areas because we want to make sure that all parking is contained on-site, which is why we are required to provide the off-street parking spaces on-site, which is why the building is anticipated to be designed to have a higher supply, supply exceeding demand. So there are no anticipation to try to use on-street parking as part of our parking requirement under the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask one question of the residents of that area? Do, do you have residential permit parking on those blocks?
Sorry, back to you there, Ms. Carroll.
Anne Carroll, 506 South Franklin Street, which seems somewhat removed, but I'm also a member of CASE Civic Action Southeast and the vice-chair. I speak only for myself because the whole CASE group has not discussed this, although I think I probably echo many of their concerns. It is a shame that this parcel was not rezoned for residential, so it would match Burger View, and no offense, because I don't like that term, but it is what everybody calls it. And so, you know, I offer that, that perhaps it should be rezoned, because my concern is that the town center is going to merge in our neighborhoods, because the university has used some of those shops down in the 700 block of South High, so if we keep moving down, they will eventually meet in a residential area. The peak travel, I know normally in, in these studies, it's done for business purposes, but we have a major university, peak travel is whenever class changes. So I would offer that to the traffic study. I am also concerned about anybody who wants to ever go north out of this development, because it does not seem possible. I'm very familiar with making the trip from Dean to Magnolia, it is not an easy thing to do. I'm also very familiar with Price. I do not think that there should be a charge to anyone to park in the building. Those spaces should be assigned to apartments. And I would also suggest that if the developer believes that this is sufficient parking, that the developer offer never to be part of the permit parking program or the guest pass program. We cannot continue to absorb the mistakes that councils sometimes makes by not seeing the future. It's a really hard thing to do. But we live in what they didn't see. And when I go home tonight, I won't have a place to park. So I'll be illegally in some business place. I also do not think that parking should be fee, because that will encourage people to avoid the fee. It should be incentivized if you don't have a car and can prove it. The pricing of the, the apartments, well, let's look at the size of the apartments. I would remind everybody that our zoning code currently allows four unrelated adults to legally inhabit housing, and we'll talk about the ADU later because there's a change there that's going to make new developments also allow four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Quillman, I live on 346 East Piddle Street, that's on the other side of Marshall Square Park. However, I used to live on Dean Street, and I always had trouble with that intersection there, trying to get onto High Street from Dean Street. But I'm also a member of the Westchester Historical Commission, but, and I'm a historian in the area. I'm really, I'm sort of appalled by the, I know we haven't seen the final, you know, size of this, but it seems like no matter what you go, they always have developers, they would, they call it the cram plan, they want to get as many housing units in one place. But when they were talking about the, the three different sides and how we have to sort of follow the setback of the other existing houses and what they, are their buildings, like we were talking about on High Street. If you look at those little stores, they're sort of 1930s classic-looking stores, I'm concerned too, that this is a, this is one of the main entrances of Westchester, as opposed to the other side as well. We're, we're coming in, we're seeing the university, people getting off 202, and they're going to see this, you know, this giant oversized structure with luxury housing in this corner, but I don't see from, especially when you looked at this design, when they had the little figure going down, little alleyway and a little figure above, it was very unusual. I mean, what are you going to do? Try to have a, have them going, you want to get more space, or you're going to have a walkway over the other walkway? I mean, there's no way that they could ever match up the aesthetics of going and seeing this massive building on every little square inch with no greenery, hardly, we don't even know if they're going to save the trees, everybody was already upset that they already took down the two, 200-year-old sycamore trees. But basically, to come up there and to see this massive structure, and it just goes with everything else, I used to call it, "Don't supersize my town." But it seems like, when, years ago, Westchester had a little motto, and I can't remember exactly, but I know it was like, "Small town, you know, think big," but it was, the key was, we had all these people coming out at one point when we had the height restriction. People say they didn't want any more beige buildings, and I'm sorry, the architecture, I don't care what it is, it's not going to be in keeping with something that's so beautiful, like some of our 1870 buildings now. And anybody that wants to come to Westchester, I guarantee you, they always point out the early historic houses, not a big massive structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Eagles. I live on 400 South Church Street. It's at the corner of Church and Dean. I have three points I'd like to make to help us have a safe community and a livable environment around our area. The first is around the size of the building. I'm not sure if a shadow study is being done about the shadows being cast, but there are homes on Adelle Alley that will be in the wake of losing their sunlight due to the size of this building and their homes being immediately behind that. I would request a shadow study be done for the benefit of my neighbors that are on Adelle Alley. The second is regarding, and the third are both regarding, traffic. The traffic study currently does not look at Clinton Alley at all. Clinton Alley is a two-way alley. It is insufficient of size, but anybody trying to navigate our borough on the one-way streets recognizes that the alleys act as thoroughfares. If we're not studying the impact of the traffic on those thoroughfares, we have a challenge. There is no stop sign at the corner of Church and Dean. That means that those individuals traveling south on South Church Street do not have a stop. There are already hundreds of people that beep their horns at each other at that intersection currently. The retail happens to be on Dean Street. The retail being on Dean Street means there's a certain turnover rate. That turnover rate for 25 spaces, assuming two times per hour, you're looking at 50 vehicles per hour during the retail operations, traveling down a one-way street that has insufficient space while there are trucks trying to drop off. Already 20, 30 minutes at a time when the Cisco truck is there, you cannot pass on that street. So if there's a Cisco truck there, you're losing all that access and you have 50 vehicles trying to get into and out of a retail establishment. And that's just assuming you turn over only once an hour, meaning one 30-minute stay in that spot to visit a retail store. Oftentimes, turnover can get as high in malls as 4.55, I think is the standard out of the piece. And then finally, I would request that when we do the redo of a traffic study, we request the flow of traffic because of all the one-way streets. Meaning you'd have to look at Darlington to Dean so that people coming down Dean Street could get there. You'd have to look at Union to South Church because that's how people would come around the corner from that place. And you'd have to look at Clinton Alley because anybody coming down Price that wants to go to the retail is either going to go all the way down to Darlington, all the way up to Dean, and then all the way down, stopping at a stop sign where there's no cross-stop sign, or they're going to go on Clinton Alley. Clinton Alley is not a safe place for two-way traffic, and that's where they'll be going. So I would request that is part of the traffic study. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Shannon Mandine, 711 South Matlack. Again, it might seem a little bit removed, but I am in a unique position where I'm an attorney in town, and I walk in the borough from 711 South Matlack to my office on Darlington Street every day. I walk with a dog, and I make that walk on various roads in this town. I can tell you that it's a great opportunity to have that Burger King lot redone. It's not pleasant to walk past that. However, I think that having this size building right up on that edge is going to make it very unpleasant to walk past, as was pointed out with the higher store levels. It's just going to be walking against a wall. And this is supposed to be a walking borough. That's part of the point of the borough and living in the borough and working in the borough is walking in the borough. It should be pleasant. I also share the significant concerns regarding the storm water as well as the underwater, underground tributaries that have to be there. There has to be water there under that site. And to put in a parking garage underground is going to impact that. It's going to impact basements around it. It's going to impact the way water flows through our town. And again, living just one block off of that creek that floods on South Franklin, every time we have a storm, hopefully that's changed now, but every time we had a storm prior to this, it's tough. It's not a great thing to do, and it's really bad for the future of this borough to have that flooding persistently occur. So I think that's really important. Again, this is a great opportunity to build something beautiful. This is an entryway into our town. It is town center. I understand that it can be big, but does it need to be this big? Finally, 700 square feet and 1,100 square feet as far as being normal-sized apartments, I don't agree that those would be normal-sized. I think if you're trying to have two individuals, a couple, live in a 700-square-foot one-bedroom, I mean, my goodness. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Renee Ryan. I live at 203 East Rosedale, right around the corner from Shannon. So I really hope everyone's able to find solutions for all of the topics that people have been bringing up tonight because I do see the value of bringing more housing to Westchester. I'm a Realtor. I'm starting to see our working class get priced out of Westchester. And it would be lovely to make sure that pricing is of consideration as well. I used to work at the point at Westchester. I know that the smallest apartment for one bedroom was 745 square feet, so it's kind of in the realm of what they were talking about. For a two-bedroom, the smallest size was 1075. So I am curious about your solution for pets and if you'll be allowing them because obviously people will be walking their dogs out and, yeah, their dogs outside. I definitely want to make sure the experience of walking by is pleasant because I also too walk a lot in the borough. And then I also, you know, over the last three years watching Ida come through, I've seen houses that were not considered in the flood zone now considered in the flood zone. And I'm only about maybe 200 feet away from the flood zone, so that's definitely a consideration of mine now. And then it's only going to become harder for folks to sell their homes. And that side of Franklin is not the only place where there's a flood zone in the Westchester. There's also a location by Marshall. So yeah, the more buildings we put here, the more consideration we're going to need to put towards that. And then lastly, traffic around High Street and Rosedale. I know that it backs up a lot because of student traffic during the week. There's no turning arrow at that street, and I can see that becoming a much larger issue as this develops. But I do love the idea, and I think it's a great use of a space that's been vacant for so long. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have to leave because I have a grandson at home who needs his medication.
Hello, my name is John Duffy, 23 Price Street. 23 Price Street. I'd like to start with saying Thomas Dogerty. That was a great thing. Keeping the storefronts flowing down, you know? Keeping the storefronts flowing down, cutting into the parking garage, you know? That's a great idea. Love that. I want to keep the aesthetic of the neighborhood the same. But it is a big piece of land. I actually just walked it today. It's massive, so I'm actually not surprised that you can fit so much on it. But I'm not against this project, but I do have some questions that maybe can be answered later. Looking at the plans, the roof seems to be flat. If it is flat, will it have access to the tenants? You know, we have this like beautiful land right here. It'd be a shame to not have roof access, right? The neighborhood or borough needs a little bit more of that, I think. And if you do not want to have the tenants have access to it, please paint the roof white. That actually keeps the borough from getting too hot. Also, this building is quite big. It will get a lot of sun on it. It will get very hot now on that spot. Instead of grass, you'll have this giant building absorbing all the heat from the sun all summer. It's also not good for global warming. Also, we have to worry about the kids. Kids will inevitably live in this place. You know, they do some research now where they say that, you know, kids obviously need fresh air. Well, the kids have a balcony. I would like to have not just a little box in a wall. I would like to have a little balcony for the kids and adults, right? People need to live there. And is this going to be a five-over-one, which is where you have one floor that it's all concrete, and then all the rest are five floors of wood? And, you know, me, I kind of want to see this building last maybe 100 years, but if it's made out of wood, I mean, that's not really, you know, I know you want to build something that's really strong and could even be converted later. If you make it out of steel and concrete, I totally see that happening, but out of wood, not a lot of work to be done there. And a big thing is what businesses do you intend to have on the first floor for the commercial space? I am a student at Westchester University. I've had to drive personally people to the grocery store because there's no good grocery stores at all within walkable distance, right? So I've had to do that plenty of times. I would love just a little tiny grocery store or even the ability to put a grocery store there eventually. Not just, you know, I saw the plan up there, kind of small, not really the size for even like a small local shop, just for like fruits and vegetables. And then also bike parking. I like to see in the future, you know, 20 years from now, I see a bunch of bikes just everywhere. I would love to see that. We need to be less car-centric, and so bike parking in the parking garage would be great.
Hello. Cool. Sean Berry, 15 Linden Street. So just south, basically on campus. So heard a lot about the how and also the who, you know? Nice to hear everyone considers themselves from the borough, but for the next proposal, it'd be really great to hear the why, like why is this good for the community? I think that would be really, really nice to hear. What does it solve? How does it help us kind of move forward? And then I guess like this is kind of maybe more of a comment or lends itself closer to the world of opinion, but you know, is 120 more apartments what we need when, you know, most of the younger generation here, myself included, I just bought a house thankfully, but it was by a stroke of luck. We're all looking for houses right now to start a family, not a two-bedroom apartments. And I just think that, yeah, it's just something that we also kind of just need to consider as a community, maybe. I don't think you can address that, but maybe that is part of the opportunity after all, but that's all.
My name is Josh Rosenblum. I live at 316 West Biddle Street. So a little bit out of the way of the spot, but I do like to walk around the town a lot, and I find myself walking around by the university area quite a lot as well, including the Burger King space. I do think a lot of the issues that have been raised tonight are valid issues, and I hope that the design team does work to address them. But I also just wanted to express that I personally feel that density is a good thing for a city like, for a town like Westchester. I do think that apartments are something that bring in a diversity of population that can help the, can help the, can help the town be more vibrant. And I think that it can animate neighborhoods and animate more than just the immediate area around the building. It can animate, it can animate a wider area beyond that in ways that it's hard to sort of comprehend when you're just looking at like plans. So I did want, I wanted to put that point out there. I also wanted to say, maybe I'm a little biased, but I happen to know Pete Stas, and I know him and I know his development in Ardmore is, I've seen it personally in intimate detail, and it is a really well-done and well-built project. And I can't imagine he wouldn't bring the same care and attention to this project as well. So for what that's worth, I wanted to put that out there as well. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Benita Ties. I live at, sorry, I live at 306 South High Street, just right on the corner of where this new place is going to be built. Just a couple of things. One about the quote-unquote recreation zone. I wanted to know if there's a way, if you could rotate the building 180 degrees so that recreation zone can be a part of the actual street? Why is it secluded from everything that's going on? It would be a great addition to the borough if like you're walking down the street, walking your dogs, hanging out with your kids. It'd be a little mini park. In lieu of the, I believe there was a little triangle area for the moving of Dean Street to Magnolia. Like if we can't do that, let's have the buildings, recreation areas, whatever they may be, be a part of the actual High Street. Let's see, and also concerned about the height of the building itself. Since I live at 306 South High Street, right next, right above, gosh dang, Champion's, I use the parking lot behind that building. And when I walk out of my apartment, I, looking south, I can see basically everything going down towards like the library. With that building there, I'll just be staring at a sheer wall of brick and windows, and I don't know how that's going to affect like people coming through, going down Dean Street. That corner is horrendous. I guarantee every graduation, every Christmas, every holiday, someone's going the wrong way up that street. Someone's not going to be looking, crossing the right way. And I know adding another light's not going to add much to it, so if there's any way to, I don't know, make the driveway on another part of that street, that would be cool. And I think the last thing. For the traffic study, did they look at Church Street at all in relation to like the maintenance vehicles, garbage, Cisco trucks coming down that street? If the commercial parking lot is on Dean Street, you would have to take an extra route to get around to get into that parking lot? I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zach Pierce. I'm not a resident of the borough. I live at 135 William Penn Boulevard, which is down behind the BMW dealer. However, I do own two historic properties in the borough. One of my first clients in real estate, I am a real estate agent, was Jeff Reinhold, who owns Sharpless Works. He's the one that kind of made me fall in love with these historic buildings and got me focused on Westchester. I moved to Westchester 20 years ago to New Can Apartments down at Boot Road and Paley Pike and just fell in love with the borough. So you'll see me here a lot with my family every weekend. We're eating meals here three, four days a week. So I'm a lover of the borough, although not a resident. I take that High Street drive every morning when I leave my house and come into my office. We recently, our first entry into the borough was 201 West Barnard, which was an old mansion converted into four apartments, which had fallen into disrepair. We purchased that and renovated it, and just want to restore like that historic charm which I've come to love. Our most recent project was the Church Street Market House, which is a 120 North Church. We won a historic preservation award for that building, which again, had fallen disrepair. As real estate guys, you're like, you know, everyone thinks about the money. We were like, this is such an old, historic, charming building that had fallen into just, it was ugly, no one knew what it was, and we made it awesome. And so I'm going to be here long-term as an investor, as a pseudo-resident, and somebody who raises their family here. I am in favor of the project largely because when you look at a lot of Main Street towns and you look at what's also important to this town, which is our street-level retail, you know, buildings like this bring a resident base in, which is very common. And if you look at Phoenixville, Doylestown, Media, Conshohocken, you name it, a lot of these towns are bookended by Class A apartments. Right now, we have one in Chestnut Square, which I think was done extremely well. I think, I'm sure everyone else feels, I think it's an awesome building. Bernardin was also the designer. I think that Bernardin being in the borough kind of gets maintaining that historic charm. However, I do think that the residents who have a different challenge than I would have as somebody that's an investor here, have a different set of challenges with the developers also need to pay attention to regarding like traffic counts. But overall, I'm for it. I think it's going to be cool to have a nice new building to sort of, it helps to raise home values. It helps to bring more residents in, to be customers of our retail centers. And I think it's important that we continue to foster responsible development, I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Horvath. I'm resident of 245 West Union Street. I'm also a Realtor, and I've lived in my house for probably 37 years. So I've been around the town for a long time. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all that you guys are doing as representatives of the borough, as well as these people who are trying to develop the property. I think there's a lot of integrity, and I hope with a lot of collaboration, it goes the way it should be. There are streets that are issues with the parking, and there are streets that are issues with driving. Like I said, I've lived here for 37 years, and I park in front of Jason Burrow's house because I don't have off-street parking. So hopefully you can work out the kinks, but I really appreciate what everybody's doing. And like I was telling my husband, when I moved down here, Mark Rowan was trying to redo the town, and there was a lot of pushback for him. And then there was the hotels and Chestnut Square. Sharpless Works was one issue too. So I think, you know, it's a good thing. I like the ground, the town growing, but maybe we can work on the parking and the traffic. So, but thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening, Brian Travis, 304 South Walnut Street. I am for this project. I think progress for the city is good. I've lived here for more than 15 years, and I've seen just wonderful work. Our borough is vibrant. I love being in this town. A lot of us enjoy the walkability. I think a lot of us are concerned about the appearance of this building and the size of it. I'm one of those people. I don't know how we decided to... of it. I'm one of those people. I don't know how we decided the number of apartments. I think it was probably in my mind, it was to maximize the space, the footprint. I think we should reconsider that. We're losing some green space, even though it's a small amount, but it does exist even on that lot now. And I'm also concerned about the traffic. I make that left turn multiple times a day onto Magnolia Street. And I have done that jog between Dean and Magnolia. And if, if the consideration is serious for tying these two one ways together, I mean, they go the same direction, and putting a logical intersection, this is the time to do it right now, while this property is under construction or under consideration. So, thank you for the comment.
Hello, John Cottage, 532 North Church Street, which as people have said, is a bit of a distance away, but that shouldn't matter because we all care about the borough, right? So I do have some concerns. Ecology, the heat sink aspect, it's a large open space right now. It's going to have a big building there. It does have a flat roof, so hopefully somebody can consider putting a green roof on there. In terms of aesthetics, that's one of my big concerns. This is a major thoroughfare, as people have said. It's an important archery. It's where a lot of people get to see the town. And so the loss of the open space and the trees is important. I'm also concerned, as somebody else mentioned earlier, about the impact on the nearby buildings, especially with the height. You know, if you look at what happened with the parking lot, and its impact on some of the houses on, I think it's Price Street, it really ruined the back of some of those houses looking onto the parking lot there. I'd like to know more about the economic impact. I echo what somebody said, that it would be nice if someone came and told us what it will do for the community, not just what the technical aspects are and how it fits those. And so I could probably go on with a couple of other comments that people have already made, but I know we're not supposed to do that. But the question I have, I have a couple of process questions for you. You know, in a lot of businesses now, people will be on virtual meetings. And when they're doing that, there's the opportunity for people to put things in the chat, and for people to put thumbs up, or smiley faces, or whatever. So the question is, how do you take comments in a way that you understand how broadly those comments are supported or not supported in the community? Is there a way to do that? And in general, the process, you know, most of us, I think, are pretty naive about the whole process. And fortunately, you mentioned that you'll have a, another planning, a working session, and you'll have a preliminary review, and a final review. But at certain points in the process, the developers get certain rights locked in, and the people in the town get certain rights locked out. So it would be helpful if you could either tell us what the process is, or where we can go and find out more about this. And my last comment would be, trust but verify. The developer made some comments about things like, it's not going to be student housing, or it's going to have various other things. How do we lock the developers in to what they tell us in these meetings, so that when we are faced with a finished building, and it's too late to change things, we know we're getting what we have heard? Thank you.
Just to comment on a couple of things there, the, I do believe in trust and verify, that's true. The Impact Assessment Report has some economic and has some data in it, data in it, which is on the Borough website. So if you could take a look at that, and then you could have some questions from that, I'm sure. The, the other question you had, I forget now, but, oh, no, actually, the student rental, yeah, I wanted the student rental, the, in the ordinance, I'm just going to paraphrase it, it's a 500 foot radius.
Yeah, Jason, let me, let me jump in here. Let me take this. So your question was, how do we hold them accountable for their, what they say they're going to do? And your question was specific to student housing. We hold them accountable based on the zoning code. The zoning code does not permit them to have student housing in this property. I understand. The, this, the ordinance would allow them to have at least one student in all of those apartment units, because one student is not considered student housing by ordinance.
My name is CJ Frederick. I live at 22 Dean Street with my wife Jennifer, and our family has been there since 1985. I, if you'll indulge me, you need to like, give me a few background statements to make that would kind of, I think, help everyone's understanding. My wife and I and our family could technically be the poster child and family for the idea of being a NIMBY relative to this property, because it will actually occur in our backyard. I think the other thing I need to tell you is that, to the extent that you may not know, I am an architect, I'm a landscape architect, I'm a land planner. For the last 50 years, I have worked primarily on the side of development to get projects like this approved. As a matter of fact, I'm working on three of them right now. And therefore, it's not my intention to take my potential NIMBY identity and apply it to this project, but to hold it to the letter of our ordinances in the borough, which theoretically, we're all here to uphold. And I think that that's what should prevail. The biggest thing alarming me tonight is the fact that there is any thought of this project being voted on next month. Okay. For instance, I personally have analyzed this project for the last two months. I've looked at all the drawings, read the reports. Kevin, don't worry, I'm not going to go into my comments on all of it. My head would explode as well as yours. But there are three things in the project that really comprise items that need variance approval. Most of them have been mentioned tonight, if not in detail, at least offhand. Height, open space, and the third one, let me think a minute. Oh, the bill two, front yard setback line. I appreciate Mr. Cassidy's comments on behalf of his client. It was a very good, well put amount of palabra that would represent them. However, it has nothing to do with the language of your ordinance. That alone should keep this project from moving forward at any kind of pace represented by a vote next month. I don't think you're being fair to yourselves if you vote on this next month. I'm willing to talk to anybody about these items. In fairness, Pete Stas and I have had two conversations about the project. My official position doesn't exist right now with regard to it. As I said, I'm here to make sure that the letter of, and language of what we all believe in should prevail here is what's important. And I hope we can stick to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, I just want to clarify two comments that CJ made. One, you know, and Jason did make a statement that, you know, whether or not it's going to be voted on next month, that'll be evaluated. We, a decision will be made, one way or another, when the Planning Commission feels that it's time to do so. We have to, the Planning Commission and Borough Council have to follow timelines that are, I'll wait. There are timelines that we have to follow that are outlined in the municipality's planning code. By law, we have to follow these timelines. So when, when a land development plan is submitted, from today's date, at this first meeting of the, of the Planning Commission, we have 90 days. Borough Council has 90 days to render a decision on the plan. So there are, we will, we will have to follow that law. So the Planning Commission will determine when it is necessary to render a decision to forward that to Borough Council. CJ, to your comments regarding the variances, you know, as this plan moves along, and we continue to review those comments, we will look at that. At this point, we don't know, you know, we're not certain if those are required, but we will certainly evaluate that as the, as more information becomes available. But at this point, I don't think that those variances are-
I agree that that has not been represented to you, except for my comment. So in fairness, I understand what you just said. And the only thing is, I think the way this is going, I think would be quite reasonable sometime soon to ask the applicant for an extension time. Your 90 days fails the law.
Any more comments from the public?
My name is Lee Robinson. I live at 231 Sharpless Street. I'm in the Terrace Apartment Building. Many of you know that that apartment building is right up next to the university and has a nice setback, so it blends nicely into the community. I also want to mention that houses are selling at $400,000, $500,000. So you're pushing out the working class. So if a project like this is coming in at market, market rate, you're pushing rents up, which are pushing the people that actually are working here out of the borough. So I was hoping that the Planning Commission or Borough Council could consider affordable housing in the future for, for our residents. But I also want to echo the, the site problems at Dean Street, especially for pedestrians. When we try to cross there, a car can come out real quick and hit us there. And then also, there was some, I couldn't really see it in the rendering, but the part that they have on Price Street, there's like a step there for where the benches are. I would recommend that the whole sidewalk area be flat, so that ADA, wheelchair, all of that can enjoy the entire space without having to, you know, find a certain ramp or to get to another area. And then just to acknowledge that Septa does run the 104 along High Street. So incorporating that into any of the traffic problems, if that gets congested, that's going to throw off timetables. And, and that might be a problem for those of us who use public transportation. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Allen, 417 South Church Street. I'd also like to commend you all for doing what you do and making sure that this product, project goes the right direction. Most of what I had intended to talk about has already been addressed. And I have other questions that were not appropriate for the first meeting. But I'd like to talk about the, one, this, this project or building is massive. Okay, let's not lose sight of that. No matter how nice it's made, it's an intrusion into the space. And I'd encourage everybody not to forget that. Okay, it does not fall in sync with what's surrounding it, period. So, the other part is, I don't really understand the concept of adding retail. As you know, that this, you know, location matters when it comes to retail. This is disconnected from the downtown shopping district. People are not going to walk from High Street, in my mind, the majority of them are not going to walk from that area down here to shop. So that means either these retail stores are going to survive off of the local, i.e. college students and some residents, or they've got to be destination location. And destination location means driving. And it's already been brought up ad nauseam about the impact. And I won't get into that because Clinton Alley was brought up, and there's all kinds of things that trouble me relative to that. But I don't understand, well, I do understand that the amount of traffic needed to support retail environment is going to be significant. Furthermore, the parking, as called out, I believe there were 30 spaces, if I'm not mistaken, allotted to this. Does that include parking for the employees? You're talking, what, 9,500 square feet of retail showrooms? I assume that takes more than one person to man each one. Now you're left with a minimal amount of parking relative to retail shopping. And all of that traffic is going to be dumped into our neighborhood. So I think it's literally lost on me, the, I understand the, the ability to charge per square foot for retail stores. It's lost on me, what type of business will survive there. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else going once, going twice? All right, public comments closed. My battery is dying here, so I need to, we'll move on to our next item of the agenda, Old Business. Approved final draft of the ADU ordinance.
Folks, we still have a meeting to finish up. So if you're exiting, please do it quietly so we can continue the remainder of our agenda. Hey, Tom, Tom?
Tom, we're in the, we're in the middle of a meeting here. I mean, come on now. The ADU draft ordinance. The business here is to approve the final draft of the ADU ordinance.
Let me just make one comment on this, if I may. And Matt, you brought up last meeting about the, or you sent me an email, excuse me, about the language for the parking. That was an oversight on my part. I will make that edit. And if that was the only edit that you have, then if you feel comfortable with making-
One of the things that we had put on that response to the solicitor's verbiage, was that that section nine, that we, we brought in the SALDO language, but this would be turning SALDO into zoning, and that was never our intent. And so what we were hoping to do was simply have in there, and we, so we haven't read on the side of this, so that should be on the documents on the website or whatever, that, I'm looking at what I have right here, basically that it, that all applications would need to follow the SALDO, essentially. And that way, we're not reiterating, and the SALDO can change. And also, the SALDO is more flexible. And we recognize the fact that turning the SALDO requirements into zoning is stricter than what those requirements should really be. And then if I could, one last thing, we had talked about at length, we were really hoping we could do, is similar to the Historic Carriage House ordinance, which requires applicants to go in front of Harb, without teeth, Harb to review and comment, that we would, it was in, it's, it's in our 9A or whatever, that we also believe that these applicants, and when we brought this to Borough Council, they agreed- when we brought this to Borough Council, they agreed, they, you know, they suggested, they also agreed with this, that they could go, should go in front of Harb, simply for review and comment. And having been through some of those meetings, I can just testify to the value that those trained people, the free advice that they give and saying, why not move this door over here? Why not move this right over here? What about this? You know, did you think about maybe moving your condenser over here? And so it's, it's just a review, and I, we've talked to the Harb, the Harb has written a letter of support for this, and I, I think that the Harb with the SALDO in front of them, right, they're not looking at Harb legislation, but the SALDO, so.
Yeah, one of the conversations I have with the solicitor when we were doing the draft was with the Harb review, because Harb has a specific set of guidelines and regulations that they follow based on ordinance, there was a concern about having some requirements outside of those rules and regulations that they are required to follow that wouldn't necessarily be within, you know, within those bounds of what they're permitted to review. So that was one of the reasons why we removed it from there.
You know, it's kind of free advice from our Borough Arborist, but in this case, you know, they didn't follow it. And I think similarly, our thought was, it goes in front of Harb, Harb, these people have so much understanding of the historic nature of the borough, the buildings, the details and all those things. And so it's essentially just a review and suggestions, and those suggestions don't go to Borough Council, right? They just go to you, similar to the, the historic Carriage House ordinance, so.
Yeah, the historic Carriage Home Ordinance is a little different because those are part of a historic inventory and that little, I don't want to, you know, comparing apples and oranges at that point. So the solicitor did have a concern about the legality of Harb reviewing something that isn't, is outside of the historic district. You know, that we can certainly have those design guidelines in place, absolutely. And that was one of the things where we didn't want to really have just a full list of design guidelines in the, in the zoning ordinance because it's really not appropriate. So we were trying to find a way to incorporate those and just by having a pointer to the And then obviously, those design guidelines are only going to apply to ADUs that are built on an alley. They're not going to be for ADUs that somebody could potentially put in their backyard, right? That would be accessible. But I think there's only, having a pointer to those design guidelines in the SALDO, not every single one of them is going to be applicable. So it's really like a catch-22 with this. Do we list them in the ordinance or do we just put the pointer? Because if you put the pointer, then that's going to say that all of them have to comply. So the other, the other catch is, when you put a SALDO requirement in the zoning ordinance, if they can't comply with it, now they need a variance from the zoning ordinance instead of a waiver from SALDO. So there are some complications with putting those in there. Yeah, I mean, we, we left these in there because these were the ones that you had, we had in that original draft comment list, and that these were the ones that were going to be applicable. So if these, if these are the ones that you want in there, I think we're okay with leaving them listed in there. Do you want, do you want, my question for the Planning Commission is, do you want to see that list changed?
When we discussed this at length at our working session, we were hoping that we could simply have a reference, and so I want to make sure that you see the document we put together, where section nine simply says, "See applicable rules in SALDO," because there it's spelled out to great detail in four or five pages with graphics and everything. So as opposed to codifying the SALDO in zoning, keeping the SALDO SALDO, and simply having a reminder, a little reference in section nine saying, "See SALDO," and that would be essentially all I would say.
My question is, without having the SALDO in front of me, are there guidelines, design guidelines in there that are not going to be applicable, that you're having a reference to?
Isn't that the case with any subdivision land development ordinance?
Well, if you, if you're putting a reference, if you're putting a pointer in the zoning code to the SALDO design guidelines, and there's something that's not applicable to these ADUs, then they're going to have to comply with it.
No, there's plenty of things that are not in a development where you'd say this doesn't apply.
I get your point that if it's a zoning requirement, a use, a setback, if you don't comply with it, you need a variance. But the zoning ordinance refers to a lot of different provisions, in subdivision ordinance is that if you don't, they, they can, those are waivers then, and the Planning Commission or others can act on them under the provisions of the subdivision ordinance, not the zoning ordinance.
Well, let's, this, if the construction of an accessory dwelling unit on a, on a parcel is not going to go through land development, it's not going to come to the Planning Commission, it's going to be a simple building permit that's going to be submitted. So I would urge that you look at the design guidelines to figure out what, what you want. And I think if we just incorporate them in here, that would be the best course.
Could we in our working session go through the SALDO point by point and simply reference very specifically? Because it would be like, maybe like six different little points. But our, our goal was to simply have to refer to the SALDO, which then can adjust on its own with, you know, via our town architect and not have to go through the zoning rewrite. Would that be appropriate?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think there, I, I think, and I don't think there's any, I don't think one way is worse than the other. I think if you have them listed in this zoning section, then that would be appropriate. I mean, it's right there, then we know exactly what guidelines are going to be defined for these ADUs. If you're going to put a pointer and you have to put several different pointers in there, you know, maybe get a little complicated. So I think if you want to, we can continue with what we have here, or we can go back and review those design guidelines in detail to ensure that we're getting this right.
Yeah, I'm all for just kind of keep pushing this thing. So, but at the same time, I think, I'm okay with holding it. What do you, I mean, what does everybody think? I mean, yeah, I mean, next month and- Yeah, I'm okay with that. Rest of you? Yeah, we'll just, we'll just table it until next month. Someone here that'd like to speak in regards to this item?
Ann Carroll, 506 South Franklin Street. I'm sorry I'm coming late to this discussion. I do, I applaud your thinking that you need to take a bit more time because there's a lot in here that I have some serious issues with, and I think that Civic Action Southeast also might, and, and some did indicate their concerns. Some, I will send all of this to you as a PDF. I worked off what was online under the documents, so I was assuming that that was kind of what you were looking at. There are some places where, and it was in the original code, the word "and" is used, and I believe it should be "or" legally, but those are minor. My real concern, a question really, is why was the portion of the definition of family deleted that refers to no more than two unrelateds? Because that's huge to the Southeast and the Southwest. So in the definitional section for family, I compared it to the current definition, and striking that out is a huge change and has implications for the previous discussion.
Does anyone want to discuss, answer this family question? We've, we had that come up ourselves.
Yeah, bear with me a second. I'm just trying to gather my thoughts, reading this, and I'll be able to answer in a second.
The, the definition has been changed in the definitions section of the code so that it allows for the ADU to have-
I understand that part. What I don't understand is, when you change it in the definitional section, it doesn't just apply to ADUs. It has now applied to the entire borough and every existing structure and every structure that is about to be built. And therefore, the one and two-bedroom apartments discussed earlier will now no longer be restricted to two unrelated individuals. But like my overcrowded neighborhood, where properties are sought as rentals and are now being not student homes, but are now being used by four unrelated adults who just want to cohabitate, and that is a huge problem. So if this is going to now affect not only the pre-existing ones that were grandfathered in, but also all of the new ones that have been built and to be built, you've just densified the densified, and we cannot take it. We simply cannot. So that's a huge problem.
Well, what I would say is, and I have to go back and look at this, but we're going to be looking at it next month, so I noted to take a look. But the last sentence, this definition excludes occupants of club, dormitory, fraternity, sorority, house, lodge, rooming house-
That doesn't help.
Doesn't help.
Because on my block, there are at least three residences right now that are inhabited by four unrelated adults. They're all rentals. At least three on one block of South Franklin Street. So, and they, but they were grandfathered in because they were rentals prior to this codification. But this, and they're old buildings, new buildings that are multifamily or-
So, so wait, so if I'm-
So why the change?
I'm not following you because it says, "Or no more than four unrelated individuals."
Look at what follows that.
And, and I get your, I get what you're saying.
Okay.
We will, we will go back and reevaluate that deletion. I understand.
It's the part that's crossed out.
It's multifamily, and so Ann's concerned that the entire definition for family, multifamily currently as it sits, because that's not struck out, you can only have, so in an apartment building, you can only have two unrelated persons living in a single apartment unit. We will go back and reevaluate that, all right? We'll talk to the solicitor.
That, that is, that is awful. You will need a heck of a lot more parking spaces on that new construction if you strike that.
Yeah, I mean, the reality of it is, right now, I mean, you're right, we have a massive amount of non-conforming multifamily buildings that have four unrelated people living in there. And that, originally, that was the intent to do that because it was, you know, the sheer number that we have already of existing, it would make those conforming. But to Ann's point, to Ann's point, any new projects then would be under that reduced number.
And it would take the ones that were built after this code definition that are supposed to be, are supposed to be following the two unrelated, and flip them now to four. And as I said, when I get home, I can't park anyway. There are several places where I believe that definition of family about ADU is going to be contradictory. Let me go in order. Section three, is there still an MU? Is there still mixed use? Well, it's not in the chart unless it got cut off. No, it's not in the chart on section three. And it, I see all the other zoning districts, but not that one. Okay, in section four, subparagraph one, specific intent, crossing the deletions there would make a legal argument possible for location in all of the zoning districts and in all types of dwellings. If this is- You know what I mean? Are you seeing what I mean? If you delete that, then you're saying that in the districts where it's allowed, it can occur in all types of dwelling units.
That was the intent that-
The intent is for it to occur in all types of dwelling units.
Well, but, but I thought you only wanted them in detached and single-family attached. I thought that's where you wanted them.
The ordinance talks about different types of dwelling units. You have single-family detached, you have single-family semi-detached, single-family attached, and then mobile homes. Those are the four types of dwelling units under the definition in the zoning code.
I went, I went back to the dwelling units in our current zoning code, and there are more than that. So, nor did I.
So we're talking about single-family dwelling, not any, any dwelling unit. And so the, the point there is that any single-family dwelling unit would, would potentially be able to have the ADU.
Right, right. But there are other types of dwelling units. For example, the new one that was approved on South Matlack Street, where the units are one above the other. Those are, they have a different name in our code from these-
Two-family attached.
Well, but, but they share a backyard, so how, how would you-
That is a two-family dwelling.
Okay. Just, I'll, I'll put it in a-
So, so the ADU, so the ADU ordinance in that, in that case-
Pardon?
There are other parts of the, the ordinance in that case that would prohibit it from being there because there's issues. It's a good point, but if we were to look at it back again and we go, well, actually, wait a minute, yeah, that creates an issue, then we need to-
Yeah, I think you need to look at how many different types of dwelling units there are, and the ones that are over top of one another that share a backyard, this is not going to be an appropriate place, so.
Let me stop you.
Okay.
The one that you're referencing on South Matlack is a two-family dwelling unit on a single parcel. It is not a single-family dwelling unit on two different parcels. So that is a two-family unit, dwelling unit that is permitted by Wright in the NC2, and it would not be, this ordinance would not apply to that. They would not be permitted to do that there because it's single-family only.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look at that. I'll agree with you for now, and then I'll just make sure I understand at home.
I do, and I do think on top of that, the, the ordinance has other kind of controls in place. And again, we're going to look at it again, so I think we should, but the, the ordinance has other controls in place. Is that me?
Well, but the key element in a zoning ordinance, because I've gone through this many times in your seat, in council seat, and in zoning hearing board seat, the key word, key thing is not to contradict yourself. And there are other places where the definitions seem to contradict. I'll give this all to you in a memo because I don't want to take up the rest of your time. But if they contradict, the lawyer will- But if they contradict, the lawyer will get his choice of what he wants to happen. So this has to be right, and it's not, I can tell you right now, it's not right.
And, and I agree with you completely, and I think your, your first comment of "and" versus "or," which I noted, is very important, because you were like, eh, it's not the big deal, but that's actually very important, so I think we're talking about that.
Well, it would be impossible to have the all "ands," but it's, it's, that's technical. But the other, I'll show you, it's, there's a couple of them. Yeah, legally. And that's what I was looking for, legal definitions and clarity. The other thing that was interesting, I thought, was the one thing in Section, I forget what section it is, where you say you can't put, they want, you want, if you're on an alley, the ADU has to face the alley. The front of the ADU has to face the alley. But that would mean that you're going to have a problem with parking space, unless this is a very, very wide lot. Well, if, then you're just kind of disenfranchising what the purpose of the ordinance was, which is to give help to families who need help. So if we're only helping the people with these really wide lots...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
See, actually, I can, I can, this actually affects me, because I have a garage in my backyard, two-car garage, and enough room to get past that garage and my neighbor's garage. I can't park on that lot. In all other conditions, I could put a second floor in that garage, probably, and make it an ADU, but I can't. So it's like, there's, there's going to be situations in the borough where it just doesn't work, and it's not any different than somewhere else. And I guess somebody could go and ask for a variance, because they could ask for hardship, but I mean, that's part of the zoning code.
The other thing that it's going to do is, if you could do it, and this is a big problem from the southeast perspective, there will be places that will be able to do this if they get rid of their existing but not required parking. My house, assume my house had an alley behind it. My house is 105 years old. Now, suppose my yard is big enough and wide enough to create the smallest of these little things, but in order to meet the alley requirement, the only place I can put it is the place that I have created for my off-street parking. No big deal, according to the zoning code, because, correct me if I'm wrong, I was never required to have off-street parking. But I now live in a permit parking, it's not in my best interest, but heck, I need my old family, my old elders living there, so I'll give up my off-street parking, because it's the only place I can put it, because I can't put a driveway. So now you've pushed me onto the street in an already densified area where we're permit parking, and I can't park at my house. So I think that that needs some thought.
That's not the interpretation or the way it's written at all. If you currently have an off-street parking space, right? The ordinance says all, all, all single-family dwellings require two off-street parking spaces, okay? If you have existing off-street parking spaces, the ordinance doesn't allow you to eliminate the existing off-street parking spaces.
I was never required to have them.
It doesn't matter, it's there now.
That has not been the way it has been interpreted. So just, I, I think that's a cautionary tale, and if that's what you mean, I think it should be spelled out. So that's in my notes, too. So those are the big ones. I'll let you deal with the small ones. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments regarding the ADU ordinance? No? We'll table it.
I appreciate your comments, and it is a trade-off, and I just wanted to say that in part. You know, the studies in places where these ordinance have been in place for a number of years have shown, you know, for example, Portland thought about putting a, a, you know, median, they, they wanted to make it affordable, right? And so there was a, there was a bunch of, there was a lot of push to, to, to make all of the units be rented affordably. And in the end, that didn't get included, and then a study later showed that not only were they affordable, on average, they were drastically more affordable, and that's because it is elderly loved ones, and it's family members. It's giving individuals the autonomy to, to have usually a very, very small little rental unit that they can, you know, share with someone. Probably some were market rate, and your point about the elderly loved one in the parking, I feel for that situation, right? Because so many of these are being rented in by elderly loved ones who don't actually have a car. But one of the real concerns, obviously, that we have is the parking in the borough. So mandating that every single new one has an off-street spot is going to already eliminate so, you know, the majority of the lots in the borough won't be able to comply with this just from the get-go, because of the parking. And it's a trade-off right now, and maybe in the future, we won't, you know, maybe Google will have cars doing everything, and we're not going to need the same parking requirements or something. But for now, despite the fact that we expect the few that get built, you know, municipalities pass these crickets, right? Usually, you know, very few of these get adopted early, but many of them will be elderly loved ones without cars, but we're still going to require that parking spot for now.
That being, that issue being closed, they've moved on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. I'll make a second. Are you both in favor? Thank you. Thank you.